Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 6th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room and now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I just want to have everyone indulge me a moment. My colleague to the left has pointed out that we just went through a really long election process and I want to salute both the winners and the losers because it takes a lot of guts to put your name and face out there. I know a lot of people have worked really hard and to me, even if you don't finish first, it doesn't mean you haven't won. Just making it all the way through and knowing you did your best. The first item is a continued public hearing for Dollar General located at 1 East Dorsey. Make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As you know, this has been discussed extensively. The applicants are seeking approval to create a new, construct a new building at 1 East Dorsey at the corner of 9G. They're, I believe, before the ZBA looking for a dimensional variance. That meeting is, I believe, next week and so they've asked us to adjourn the public hearing to December the...
Fourth.
Fourth, I believe it is. So first, any comments from consultants? Any comments from the board?
No.
Yes.
Just one?
Yes.
I was duly reminded at the agenda meeting to make sure that we request that the mulch be black or natural.
Not red.
But no red.
And I'm happy to tell you that in correspondence from Ms. Maginowski to Ms. Whitman and myself, they are going to duly note that it would be black or natural.
Thank you.
They caught that, even though it was sort of picky, un and tiny, they were immediately ready to go with it. They're also going to remove all the sign details because there were some sign information that can't be on there. They're going to come back for a site, a sign permit.
Okay.
So it's going to be placeholders.
They'll be submitting what we hope will be a final package so that we have very few conditions that we have to sign into resolution.
I was going to say, if you've read Ms. Thackelson's last memo, there's a series, it's gotten shorter and shorter. So there's a series of conditions, but that's one of the reasons why we're not adjourning it for two weeks from now, instead to the fourth, so they'll have time to make all those changes so we will have less conditions to...
That works out better for everyone.
It most certainly does. So at any rate, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make a motion to adjourn to December 4th?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is continued public hearing for the Saki Brewery. Ms. Roberts is back here representing the applicant. This has been an amended site plan many times, based on changes. I hope this will be the la, well, we'll see if this is going to be the last one.
I hope it is.
But as we reviewed last time, basically, they had to expand the size, footprint of the wastewater treatment facility. They also relocated it about 950 square feet. They did receive a variance from the ZBA, the Running Board of Appeals, which now makes us free to act tonight. I believe we are resolution prepared to do so. Anything you'd like to add, Ms. Roberts?
No, just that we, as you said, received the zoning board of appeal approval and I think the only other outstanding item that I had in my notes was Mr. Pickett had made a comment that we had to correct the carport. There was a checkmark in the EAF that we needed to correct, so I sent in the corrected page on the EAF for your record.
Oh, for EV, yeah.
Yeah, yep, the, for the electric cars.
You did, thank you for reminding me for plugging and charging.
Correct.
Thank you. Any comments from the consultants?
No.
Any comments from the board?
Nope.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application?
Did we reopen the public?
Oh, make a motion to open the public hearing. Oops.
I'll move.
Open the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone has this resolution?
I do. Resolution granting site plan amendment and approval, Saki Brewery, 5 St. Andrews Road, November 6, 2019, resolution 2018-25H, and whereas, 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 thirteen times. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby grant site plan amendment approval to the amended project as shown on the amended site plan and authorizes the chairperson or his authorized designee to sign the amended site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrows. Be it further resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the amended project. One, all disturbed areas shall achieve final stabilization to the satisfaction of the town of Hyde Park Stormwater Management Officer. Two, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with evidence of issuance of a state pollution discharge elimination system permit and protection of waters permit for the wastewater treatment facility outfall to the tributary, to the tributary of the Marichi Kill. Three, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with evidence that the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health has approved the new wastewater treatment facility and permits the continued use of the existing subsurface wastewater disposal system. Four, proof of recordation with the Dutchess County Clerk of the approved public access easement for the sidewalk and stormwater maintenance easement as required by resolution Five, submission to the zoning administrator of an as-built plan which depicts all the New York State Department of Transportation required elements for the project.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Nice to see you. Have a safe drive back.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Next item on the agenda, Jeffrey Groves Estates Res subdivision. Couple of items here. We had a meeting with Mr. Kaufman, what we call an offline meeting, but with the consultants reviewing conditions. There's still a lot of outstanding conditions and in that meeting, we also had a new condition that was requested by Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. That would be, and this is an interesting one because despite all the pretty smart people reviewing this over the years, somehow this never got added, but they need an easement in order to access the water lines and maintain them once they go inside. I know, we somehow skipped that forever, so, yeah. At any rate, adding that condition both to site plan and to the subdivision will restart the date for the time they have in which to meet conditions, which is fortunate because they were going to expire, I believe, sometime soon in December.
December.
So that's fortunate. In the meantime, to meet a condition, they also have to supply a performance bond and a restoration bond. Mrs. Sotero worked with representatives from Mr. Day's office. They've come up with a mutually acceptable amount and we're here tonight to take a vote on it. I believe there's someone here from One Key. Do you want to come up and say anything?
George Brandt.
(laughing).
Peter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brandt. So does anybody have any questions or comments about this? That was easy.
No.
Who has this file?
Good job negotiating.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
It was easy.
Resolution setting bond amounts, Jeffrey Groves Estates, resolution number 2018-04G, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board of the town of Hyde Park hereby sets the amounts of the required guarantees as follows. One, performance guarantee for Daniel's Way of $520,650. And two, restoration guarantee of $20,800. Be it further resolved that the applicant must obtain approval from the town board of the form and manner of execution of said performance guarantees.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Ms. Whitman, do we receive a request so we can set the public hearing for the, to, you have written on our...
Yes, we received that request.
Thank you. So make a motion to set a public hearing, a dual public hearing, both on subdivision and site plan for November 25th? Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Again, my apologies for almost running you over in the...
Well, I appreciate your, your board engineer working on Sunday. I know you watch any football games because he was emailing comments.
Well, I did. I watched, I watched the Jets game and I'm sorry I did that.
Your estimate went up because I...
Thank you.
Too.
You've outed, you've been outed, Pete. The next item on the agenda is Al's Garage. I believe that the two gentlemen who I looked are here. If I can summarize real quickly before we get into the details, the applicants, yes, the applicants are seeking, they're really looking for, I think, just a discussion tonight, that they're going to look to add another building. There are two parcels. This has now been outlined better, so you can see that the blue is where the new business, new business is proposed to go. The smaller one that's cut out toward the front or bottom is where the existing Al's Garage is, I believe.
Great.
I prepared a statement from...
Can you use the microphone?
I prepared a, is it on?
Yes, it is.
I have hearing aid, so I can't hear anybody anyway, even myself.
And if you could introduce yourself, please.
I prepared a statement that basically...
Tom Cummings.
Oh, thank you.
Tom Cummings and this is Al Hoteling, the owner. Anyway, I'll just read this. It's very brief and I'll pass out a copy to everyone. I have been retained by Al Hoteling to provide engineering services regarding the property on Salt Point Turnpike. He has an auto repair business at 515 Salt Point Turnpike in Hyde Park and it has grown over several decades and he now needs additional space to keep up with competition and additional customer demand. Accordingly, he wishes to expand his existing business. However, the existing property is small. It's only .37 acres and cannot support additional development. Therefore, Mr. Hoteling wishes to construct another building for additional auto repair space on the adjacent 1.922 acre parcel which he owns next door on Salt Point at 513 Salt Point Turnpike while maintaining his existing repair shop at 515. The new building would be 60 by 60, two stories and built into the hill behind the existing repair shop to reduce the visual impact and the footprint while providing the needed additional repair space with the second story for parts inventory and some repair or overnight vehicle storage. Having a second building also provides security and continuity for the business in the event of a major building catastrophe. The new building would be constructed of concrete walls with an earth toned stucco finish and a metal roof. And that's just basically in a nutshell. That's where we're starting at and I'm sure we'll massage it around and...
I'll endeavor to speak really loudly for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hoteling, thank you for wanting to expand your business in our town. We try to be as business friendly as possible here, I assure you.
Yeah, my name's Al Hoteling and we've, we've been in this business for 30 years. I started on Salt Point, well, Route 9G up by the bowling alley for seven years and I've been over there the rest of the time. And we're just growing and cars aren't easy to fix anymore. They take two to three days now, not a day to fix. And, I mean, we just had a wiring harness out of a car for three days. And if I tie up a bay for that long, I need more space.
Of course.
That's where we're heading with these new cars, so...
Thank you. I know this is sort of a pre-submission application because there's a lot of items missing from the site plan amendment, but just first, just to summarize, you do generate hazardous waste, but that's removed by area carriers once a month?
Yeah.
And you generate some sort of, it's less than a half a ton a month, like batteries, tires, et cetera, kind of bigger equipment and that's all taken away too. Some of it's recycled. And a couple of questions on your environmental assessment form. Question D, 1G, 2Is, under dimensions, you have it that it's, the structure will be 38 feet high. On the bulk regulations, on the plans, on the table, it says that it's 30 feet high. I'm not really, let me rephrase that. The bulk regulations say site on page one say that the height of the accessory building is 38 feet and that the height of a building is 30 feet. I was a little confused. Is the new building going to be 38 feet?
It's, it's going to start up, it's going to be built into the hill. The hill goes up behind the existing building and it's going to dig that out so that the floors will be very close, maybe a foot or two difference in height, but it'll be built into the hill so that you could actually come into the second floor from the uphill side.
Where?
And that way it'll kind of hide the building and then any landscaping or trees or shrubbery could be added as well so that the visual impact from the road will be minimized.
Did you, did you look at the code definition of height when you calculated height? Because we have a specific way of, of calculating it in Hyde Park.
No, I didn't, I just saw that you had a minimum or maximum height, but I didn't know how you calculated it and...
So that'll be important because I think I have to pull the code.
Because on the one side it'll only be about...
It's measured, it's the mean.
The average.
It's the mean.
The average grade.
Do you shoot grades every so many feet around?
Yeah, I think it's the average grade every five feet.
Tom, you can take the other, the walkabout mic if you want to.
It should be on.
It should be on if you...
Okay. This would be the, the height, 20 feet on the uphill side and it would be built into the hill and you see...
I don't think we go to the top though.
You see the hill coming down on the side and on the other side. This is the south side. This is the north side. And then in the, the front directly, well, this door is no longer there because we changed it over to the side, but this would be the, the view from behind the existing garage. So what you would see coming up the road, you would see this coming up from Poughkeepsie. And then coming down the other way, you wouldn't even see this because the, the old corn crib or the old feed store is there and there's a hill that blocks it and a lot of trees. So you wouldn't even really see this from the north side.
So you'll, you'll want to look at the code and fix your calculations according to how we measure height.
Yeah, let me go back to say this again. First, measuring height for the bottom where the grade is changing, I think you shoot, it's the average of every five feet. And also for the top, it doesn't go, it's not measured to the peak. It's actually halfway between the peak and the roof line.
Oh, wow.
So that'll give you your, that's how you do the actual, your actual height. And again, on your plans, under the bulk table, you list an accessory structure as being 38 feet high. What is the accessory structure?
Well, that, that is the accessory structure because the primary structure is a residential house that now runs out. This is the primary.
Oh. So then you need a variance.
Unless, unless we would make this the secondary and that would become the primary.
See, this is, this, I have it in my notes here because when I was reading it, you're going to need a variance because the accessory structure would be way too large. But I also don't think that that's an accessory structure because it's not accessory to the principal uses, which is residential.
It's not, it's not related to the residential use.
They're mixed uses. It's mixed use.
So we'd have to look in this district if mixed uses are allowed.
They are.
It would be two principal uses, potentially.
But now this is a business district.
Yes, but you already have a residential use.
Okay.
And just so you know, residential is allowed in every business district as well.
Right.
It's just that most businesses are not allowed in the residential districts.
Right. I have one on Beck Road. I have a house in the salvage yard.
Right.
So I already have that in there.
Right. What I'm trying to say is, is that you don't want this to be an accessory structure.
Okay.
It's too big.
Well, it can't be an accessory structure because it's not accessory to...
To something.
To the residential use.
Yeah, it was semantics and I, I'm not familiar with your...
Right, but in other words, for our, I'm trying to make it easier for you. For our, I don't, we don't need you going to the expense of trying to get a variance from the ZBA for size.
Right.
So you just need to label them both structures. That'll help.
Right.
And then the barn, it's back over here. I thought it was like...
That's an old horse barn.
That's what I figured, I drove by.
An old horse barn, running shed.
It's a beautiful horse barn.
(laughing). Is it used part of, like, for the residences or is it just empty?
It's, I left it up only because I don't know what's going to happen here, don't know what I can do. I don't know nothing and if I, if nothing else comes of this, I'll probably put horses back up there, you know, or something like that. It's a beautiful three-star, three-stall horse barn, you know, that may rent used her whole life and everything like that.
Okay.
It was beautiful up there and I took it, there was another structure down by the house that Billy Rush had. It was just an old dilapidated barn and stuff. We got rid of all that stuff. I don't know if anybody's been by, but it looks beautiful there now. It's just, that thing was an eyesore up by the house and a couple of old sheds out back. We got rid of them and...
You clean it up a lot.
Cleaned it up.
Nice.
Yes.
So also on the bulk, on the bulk regulations table, you have scale listed at 5,307 square feet.
Yes, I, I misunderstood the scaling.
Residential doesn't count to scale.
Well, if it's two stories though, I don't think he counted both stories.
No, it's also...
It was explained that the parking spaces had to be included in the scale. Now, I, I showed the, I showed the 20 parking spaces just to show that we could do that, but he already has 20 at the existing building and that would provide the 10 required for the existing building, 10 required for the new building. So he really doesn't need to provide parking. I just did it to show that...
If you're going to include the other lot, then we're going to need like a cross-access easement.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to do that.
Are they going to be connected?
We just, we just want to make it separate. It's just for the overflow of work that we're going to do and I want to keep cars out of the parking lot. I don't, I don't want them there neither. I, I live there too. I want to get them inside.
Right, well, I'm just saying it might be cleaner to leave the other lot out of it altogether.
Yes, that's mine, that was mine.
Otherwise, if you're going to be relying on that lot for spaces, we'll have to have cross-access easements. It might be on, might have to be included on the site plan.
Yeah, we just want to concentrate on putting the building on that piece of property and that's it.
But the board can waive parking requirements.
We don't really need the parking, but we showed that we could, that it would fit to meet the zoning requirement.
So I need to interrupt you here again. Parking is not a requirement, they're guidance. So the board can actually work with you to reduce the amount of parking if you don't think you're going to need it. They're just guidelines.
Right.
They're not standards like most of the code is, so that would be rude.
And anyway, nobody wants to leave their car at my shop. They need their car. People are, I mean, I was out on the, outside trying to get people to pick up their cars, they, to arrange people, again, they don't want to leave them there, believe me.
No, I'm just saying, I think the board would like to work with you to reduce the number of proposed parking. If you're not going to use it, there's no reason to show it.
Right.
And also, scale under our code, two things. One, the driving aisle is not counted, but each parking stall is, that adds to scale. In addition, if you, this is a true two-story building, each floor counts to scale. So if the bottom floor is 3,600, then you add the two and that's going to get you up to 70, 200.
700, yeah.
So to avoid going over the 7,500, we'd probably want to look to limiting your parking, is what I'm trying to say. Because each one is nine by 18, a parking stall, each one of those count. Each one of those counts. So we'll have to work to see how we can keep you under the 7,500 scale.
Well, we'll just have like the owner's parking space out front and the rest are inside.
We'll figure something out. Don't worry. You'll figure it out, I should say. We'll help you as we go along.
Yeah.
You're going to need to show a landscaping plan. That's not shown yet. It is referred to in the environmental assessment form. And bear in mind that screening is required. Anywhere you have a residential use next to you.
And office.
I don't, I think this is residential over here.
Uh, no, that's, that's the rent property. And then we have the solar farm out behind us now.
Yeah?
That's coming...
Well, not quite yet, but it's soon be there.
Yeah.
It's almost there.
No, that's the opposite. It's not, that's greenbelt for Mr. Baxter's property.
This is greenbelt here.
Or not the greenbelt, sorry. So that's the one that does not have the solar.
This is the, over here are the existing red barns that were, used to be the feed stores. And then behind here is the solar farm.
No, no, the solar farm would be over here. This is, this is actually a neighborhood property. Mr. Baxter has two parcels and it's the other parcel.
He split it in half, basically.
Is this residential, Mr. Maldonado's property?
Um, no, I think his is...
Yeah, that's, that's...
It's a business as well?
His is the business district, I think.
No, no, no. It doesn't matter the district, is it a house?
Oh, it's a house, yes, yes. Okay.
And is this, is the rent property have a house or how is it used right now? Do you know?
It's the old feed store, right?
The old feed store, it's falling down.
It's a commercial.
No one's sitting there.
No, nobody's in it.
Okay. So there would need to be some kind of screening along here because that's what our code requires. Not where you have your existing residence, but somewhere along here.
Screening as in?
Landscaping, fence.
Oh, yeah, that's, those two houses though are very close. The, I, when we did the property line, I mean, they walk out their front door and they're on my property. You know, it's, it's, it's kind of weird how they did that years ago, but...
I'll let Ms. Paladro address this, but you're showing actual access onto that site and I don't, without cross-access easement, I think we want to have an end at the property.
Well, I mean, it's only a state condition.
Good, there.
We can, we can talk about it because it's not going the other way.
Correct.
We can't show it on someone else's property, but if he wants to show it on his.
Then we also need to have a lighting plan. On the building, you say you're going to have some wall-mounted downlights. We need to see like a cut sheet or a typical, you know, tear sheet, they call it, from the manufacturer. And that would also show you the foot candles because our code requires that lighting go to zero and foot candles at the property's edge. I don't think we're going to have a problem, but we still have to, it has to be shown. The board, as, this is a business district, so we should evaluate sidewalk requirements. They're required in every business district. We have not been requiring them in areas like this because there's no neighborhood around it to start walking onto. And also the design speed of this highway is fairly fast, but we should at least address it. There's also required to be formalized pedestrian pathways between every use. Is that appropriate for this use?
Probably not.
I'm just saying, we want to get these through because we don't want to treat them any differently.
Right.
I think that's really all that I have, except that you'll need, Mr. Cummings, you'll need to add, or call signature blocks. That'll be for the owner to sign, once we go through an approval, and for the chair or someone from up here to sign as well. If you don't have them...
Did you say topo in your list?
Pardon me?
Did you have topo in your list?
Did you have topo in your list?
Nope. Didn't even get there yet.
Okay.
I figured Pete would. If you don't have a copy of this, if you need a copy of the signature blocks so that everyone can sign.
Probably.
Cynthia can send it to you.
I, I have a question about the use. I mean, if I were here and I wanted to get a car to the other building, I would probably just drive over. Is that?
Can't, it's a hill.
It's a hill, so that's not possible.
Well, we could come, we can come long ways with the hill. Like come off that first driveway, take a right and come long ways with the hill. I mean, we could do it that way. We could do whatever way you want. I mean.
Oh, no, no.
It's not what we want. It's what, it's what.
What you're actually going to do.
What you really, what you really wanna do.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna come off of the original property and, and disturb that. Because it's gonna cause too much, too many problems, I think. So what we did was we turned the door to the Poughkeepsie side. So you're gonna come up the driveway, you're gonna take a right, come along the hill and you're just gonna drive right in.
Wait, so you're not planning on going out to the turnpike and then coming up?
Yes.
Oh, you are?
Go out to the turnpike and, and going along the, along the hills and go right in.
Cause if you were.
We're not, we're not on the same page.
We, we looked at doing this, but then it would cause problems for that lot because we're already over on some things. And it would exceed the limits for, and require lots of variances. So this way, it's so much cleaner. To just come in here and right into the side of the building. That's why we had the door on this side originally. We were gonna do that, but then it, it caused a lot of variances to have to recur. So we said, let's just come up this way.
So if there's any cars on the existing site, they have to come out Saw Point Turnpike.
Make a right-hand.
And then enter back into the new driveway.
Right.
I mean, I would love to do it the, the straight way, but it's gonna cause too many problems. You know, it would be the, it would be the smart way to do it, but I think, because I'm so close to the road, I can't, I don't have variances and stuff like that. And the building's old and.
Disturbance. There'd only be a fifty, a forty-foot driveway instead of a two-hundred-foot driveway.
I just wanna know how you actually intend on using it because it changes how we review it.
Intending it in order to follow the zoning code, but it doesn't make sense to do it this way, but we're trying to meet the code. So we revamped the whole plan to, to meet the code rather than just cross over here with thirty, forty feet, if that.
I mean, there's a coverage issue here, which is the problem, right? Cause the whole lot's paved.
So once, so if, so if he was, if he was to propose an, an interconnection road, then that means that that loops this, this property into the approval process?
It does. But I mean, we should talk about whether it might be worth it if that's what they're gonna do anyways.
So that the board up here can understand, they're talking about either a direct path this way? So you just go connect, boop? Or going this way, like this?
You could go east to west. Not gonna have to allow her to look, but.
Yes.
I mean, instead, you know, to, I don't know, to me.
Microphone, please.
He, the micro, microphone?
Give him the microphone.
Thank you for reminding me on that.
You're very welcome.
So, you know, instead of, I, I, you know, again, if you're gonna, if, you know, if you think you're gonna have a fairly decent amount of car traffic that's gonna go from your current site, that's gonna wanna go up here. Why not consider something that comes across here and comes up and in, rather than having to make people go out? It's just a suggestion.
Well, it's not, it wasn't private car in there but by employees.
Well, yeah, it doesn't.
But I mean, so our original plan was just to go straight in.
But you have, but you have a hill there.
No, it's that, that is the perfect way to do it, is to go straight in.
Floors are gonna be at the same height.
It's plateaued up there.
The problem is it would open up that front lot to landscaping and all the other requirements, which, you know, maybe.
Maybe it's a better trade-off.
Yeah. Maybe it's a better trade-off, right. I'm not sure. It's up to you to add a few trees.
If it's not gonna cause all kinds of big problems. You know, other than just put a building in here, take a road, come in here. Is, it, it would be a little harder now taking chances coming out on the Saw Point.
Well, yeah, that's right. Right, right.
And I understand what you're saying, come a little.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't know if this was flat without, you know, the topo.
This, this, right now is perfect. I mean, right now you're just gonna.
What is the issue then with, with making the decision just to go straight?
Well, because, so this lot, if you look at it, this is just based off of looking at it, it's almost completely paved. So.
It's a pre-existing condition.
But we'd be adding some more coverage to make the connection.
We would?
Yeah. And we would be opening it, we'd be opening it up for site plan approval.
Right.
Which means, you know, that you'd probably want some trees, landscaping to bring, some things to bring it into more compliance. So they need to decide if, what's, you know, business-wise, what's the better plan for them.
I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's a better plan for you to, to, to have access there, even if, even if the planning board was to ask you to do a little bit, you know, landscaping here or try to go, like dress things up a little bit, if that's really the way that you wanna operate the site.
Their debt is like ninety.
This, you go straight in, come in right here and then for me to walk back there to help you guys with this thing.
And then it keeps, and then it keeps like the house kinda separate.
So I mean, you may be able to swap out, you may be able to keep your coverage the same by swapping out some pavement.
Right.
In one place and putting it in another.
Yeah, but back here, the back of the building here is not paved. Like.
No, no, I'm talking about on, on the front lot.
All around here is not paved. It's paved like, I would say, three-quarters of its pave.
I was talking about on the front lot.
The front lot is all paved, yes.
But you could remove a piece of, of some of the pavement in the front lot is what you're saying.
In other words, you could take these two parking spaces, tear them up, put some trees or plantings in it. That reduces your scale and that's a trade for what you would have over here. That keeps you within the same.
Yeah.
Right, but, and then the sign would come into compliance.
Best idea ever. Because now I'm keeping my eyes off the road here to do this and everything like that.
Your building wasn't.
It's also, no, no, it's also, we're not supposed to design it for you.
No, I understand.
But we are, but we are.
That implies that we have to prove it. That's the reason why legally I think we're not supposed to design it for you. That noted. This way, you're gonna have a cross-access easement anyway and you could then use the parking. You don't need any of that parking over there.
You don't have to build all that other paper.
It, it solves a lot, we think.
Plus fire access and all that. You're not driving up a gravel road.
Yep.
Right.
Yep. So, good catch.
And stormwater makes it easier on stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, it minimizes stormwater and minimizes a lot of things.
Oh, well, I mean.
But it didn't fit the zoning code book. It didn't fit the zoning code book perfectly. So we said, how can we minimize the, the number of variances that we might need and to.
I don't know that we're looking at variances at this point, are we?
We might be. I mean, again, the front lot doesn't conform, but maybe if they reduce total impervious.
That's what I was saying, if you can, if they can get rid of some of the asphalt to add some landscaping, something in through here, then you suddenly have less of the pervy. In other words, they've exceeded their pervious scale, it looks like. We're not positive.
Well, by, by including the small lot, even if we reduce it, we're still probably gonna be over the percentages. And then we, we would require variances on that lot.
Okay.
And, and that was the reason. We were trying to avoid variances altogether.
Is this similar to the Deconic Realtor, the, the way we had to, when they subdivided?
That was not conforming for, the use was not conforming, the scale was not conforming. But again, I mean, I think there might be ways to work through this if they, you know, reduce the, reduce the.
You have to crunch the numbers. You have to see what you can, what you can.
Okay.
And I mean, they might have to bring the sign into compliance on the new lot.
Right.
Yeah, that was the stuff that we were trying to avoid. But to, to make it economical to go straight in, I think it's the better way to do it.
You, you need to think long-term. That, you know, ideally, if, if, you know, five years from now, you're like, geez, you know, we should've just.
Yeah. No, 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 no. Well, I wanna do it right the first time.
Think how you want it to work best for you.
So your, your, your coverage for impervious in this district is seventy percent maximum? So the question would be, can you get, can you remove enough asphalt to make it seventy percent? That's really it.
Forty-four percent now. So to get to seventy percent, we've, we've removed a lot of it on that little lot.
That's why I said it's pre-existing.
They have to add some. But if they can reduce it elsewhere to keep it under ninety-four, then we have to talk to Tad about whether that would be considered. I don't, we're not sure that would need a variance because it would be increasing.
It's prior non-conforming because you're increasing the conformity. Yes. We're going through some legal mumbo jumbo for you. But basically, if you, whatever you add, if you can get rid of a little bit more, so that it's, if it say just goes, if it's at ninety-two, it goes to ninety-one.
We could get it maybe down to eighty-nine.
It's a net, it's a net decrease. So that way, it's prior non-conforming, but it can stay prior non-conforming as long as it becomes a little bit more conforming. That's in our code. I'll find it. So you'll just have to kind of work the numbers. Sure.
Interesting.
Well, we should talk to Tad about it.
Maybe we should, maybe we should have an offline meeting and we'll get some tissue paper.
Chris?
So, just looking at it, you know, since you own both sites, would it make more sense to kind of purchase that one little section from himself? So he could.
The, the problem is the scale. It makes, it makes perfect sense for everything but scale because then instead of having the seventy-five limit on, seventy-five hundred limit on one lot, he's got a seventy-five hundred limit on two lots, which is probably already used up on the first lot.
But even though he's increasing the size of his lot, it doesn't, it's not gonna make a difference.
Scale doesn't.
Yeah, it's a catch twenty-two.
It's not a ratio.
So it may make more sense from every other perspective.
Yeah.
So again, if you can create, if you can, since you're gonna be adding some hard surface here to drive, if you can reduce someplace over here to add landscaping. So that you, again, wind up with a net, if it's ninety-two, ninety-one or ninety, then under our code, I believe it's allowed with no variances.
We could probably do that. Yeah. Get it down to maybe ninety or eighty, eighty-nine or something.
That would make the most sense to me. And plus, that way you don't have to use all your parking up there. Again, like, like Pete said, you're not having cars have to enter Saw Point, which is fairly speedy at times.
Yeah.
And have to drive by your house, et cetera, et cetera. Cause it's gonna be much more direct and it's gonna save your employees a lot of time too, just to go, juke.
So just another consideration, DOT will, if you do, do this alternate that we're talking about, DOT will probably make you tighten up your entryway.
The, I already had talked to them. You can't, because I can't even get my flatbed in.
Oh, really? Okay.
Right now, my flatbed is on the white line. If I wanna put a car in that front, in the front two bays, I couldn't. So I, I basically already talked to them and they said, I won't make you do anything because it's just, it's un-conforming. Just like we've been saying all along, it's so close to the road, you know.
Well, that's, I mean, that's helpful for you.
Yeah. Well, it is, but I, I like to make things nice too. I mean, I mean, I like to clean it up. I mean, I don't want anything. I live there, you know? I live all around. I got, what do I got, five other houses, you know, in the area? I don't, I wanna keep it nice. You know, we fixed the one up on, on East Dorsey, the one on Dale. I sold that to, I'm gonna sell it to Glammer. And he's got it all fixed up nice and everything.
Does, I mean, you know, depending on how this, how this ends up, doesn't make any sense to take, take the building from up in the back and then move it, move it down in the front or no?
I wanna keep things separate.
Okay.
I, I learned something all the time.
It's up to you.
A friend of mine bulked everything together. Something happened and he lost everything. Where he would've only lost half of it, but he lost everything because he bulked everything together. And he lost a million. So, I mean, it was.
If there was a vehicle, say, just for instance, there was a vehicle fire in the garage. That would ruin the electricity for the garage and he'd be shut down for six months before he could rebuild it. This way, he's got a separate building that he can still work out of while the first building would be under repair. So.
So you just have to address that in your application.
Your neighbors have had that happen.
Exactly. There's another case in point.
Yeah, I've been working with him and stuff and Tommy, they, they bring, they bring their small stuff in. I don't want big trucks or anything like that. But he's been bringing the small stuff. Yeah, we've been working with him and stuff like that. And Baxter, he came down. Tad thought we could work together because he needed an access in, but it didn't work. So, but he went on a different avenue. So even him, he came down and said, if I need help with anything, he'd be born and happy. Nice guy. Nice guy.
Yep.
Anything else, Pete?
No, probably we should just have a meeting and just try to figure it all out, help him out.
Okay. Victoria?
Apart from, you know, deciding how you wanna proceed and redoing the numbers and calculations, no.
I have a question about the building. Right now, we're looking at doing a concrete walls with stucco finish, earth tones and a metal roof. Are there any differences that you would prefer to see or?
You would be aiming those questions at the board, not them. Trust me. You'll hear in a moment. You'll hear that in a moment, trust me. So you're talking about concrete with a stucco finish?
Yeah.
A skimmer stucco on the outside. You'll hear from the board. Is that all, Victoria?
Oh, I guess I just wanted to add for the minutes that mixed use, any ladder building may have more than one use. Provided it meets density and scale. So it's one oh eight, four point two B. So they might be better as approaching it as two principal uses.
It's what it is. They're not related uses. Except that he works and lives at one, but otherwise they're not related. Because the, the repair is not accessory to the principal use of living.
So that's one oh eight, four point two B.
In other words, this way you don't, you, you don't have to worry about, the bigger issue for scale here is, is that again, you have already sixty-two hundred square feet. And again, if you can move, if you can make the connection, you don't need any parking at all except maybe one space, then you're under seventy-five hundred. That's the goal here, I believe, is trying to keep you there. Another thing for the board to consider as we go along with our comments is even on all business districts, you're required to place any building up as close to the front of the property line as possible with parking in the rear. I think given the use of this and that this will provide better screening to put it further back, I think we'd wanna relax that standard.
Yes.
I'm just bringing that up. Like I said, it's sort of like the standard for sidewalks too. We haven't required sidewalks at PTL or anywhere in this area because there's not a neighborhood to support it. So we would just consider relaxing that standard too. Let me start to my left. Ms. Weiser, comments?
Uh, just on the, on the elevation, your, the front, the east side elevation? I think it would be nice to have, to have like the two windows here, just like your, the south side.
We did have windows there initially and then we turned the building when we decided not to do the connection. Now we've kinda gone back full circle. So yes, we, we would put windows back.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I gotta pull up the old plans and, and we did have windows on that, yes.
Great. And then I would love to see a sample of the, what the stucco would look like. So, that's for me.
Thank you, Ann. Brett?
Okay, I like the idea of going right from your main facility into the secondary, going all the way around, do everything. We can't support that because you've got fire access, you've got a lot of other stuff going on there. You've done a ton of cleanup there in the past. Thank you. Look a lot better. The only.
Well, we still need the driveway to go around to the second story, but it would be much shorter.
No, we need the driveway no matter what for fire access. That's what Brett was saying. Yeah. We, we accepted that, but it won't have to be the same standards as having regular usage.
And then the only other thought when I saw it is, you've got a lot of parking in that grass area there. Be nice to keep that clear. Do you need that for driving across? So that if you were to put a split, you know, fence like eight feet off your pavement towards the grass, that'd give you room for snow and stuff during the wintertime, but it would just keep that area cleaner. It's a thought.
It's a good point. Thank you. Stephanie?
Um, no, I echo their comments. I don't have any to add.
Ann?
Uh, ditto.
Chris?
Uh, I would agree as well and working towards, you know, streamlining that access that, that makes sense. And regards to the stucco finish, I think the earth tone is, you know, a good idea maybe. When they're doing the stucco, you can maybe look at doing like a little bit of a color band around, around the building. Yeah, just to kind of break it up since it's gonna be one, you know, monotonous facade. Other, other than that, I think it's, I think it's pretty good. Thank you.
Diane?
Good points. When you're bringing in the samples of the stucco and the different colors, if you can also bring in the color of the rubric. To see how it all goes. I, I agree with what my colleagues have already stated, so no more comments.
And I had most of my comments at the very beginning because there were more questions. I said, I think I'm most interested in seeing what you wanna propose for landscaping. Landscaping could also, if you're gonna put something simple in front of the building, I, I, we wanted to not make this easy so you have access, but that will also break it up the expanse, the mass. As Chris referred to it as a monotonous facade. And I think the board should probably look at this kind of the way we did the golf cart place, golf car. Cause this is a similar kind of structure. If you've seen the golf cart building, it's coming along, it's a bit more, it's a bit more vivid in color than I think a lot of us anticipated.
Vibrant, yes, it's vibrant.
It's very vibrant. It's, it's more tomato red than it is burgundy, but.
It's good down there.
Yeah, it's great. But it's not beige.
Pops up with the color. Pops with the color. So if you notice, they put some decorative elements on the front. Just to try to, again, to try to break up the mass. In this case, I'm not as concerned because I don't think you're gonna see it as much because it's set so far back. And with the golf car, when you're driving south, no matter what, you see it because it's, it's elevated too. So there'll be a building in front of this, a structure in front of this. So I think what has been suggested is to have a meeting that's more informal here at Town Hall with Pete, probably a couple of us. And definitely Tad. Cause we need to have, make sure that she agrees on some things the way we're looking at them. So can you contact Cynthia and we'll set up a meeting? We can discuss everything a little bit more informally.
Right. The board can't tell you how to proceed, but, you know, you have some options and you'll have to decide what's, what works best for you, given.
I'm a auto mechanic, so I, that's why I put my, you know, I can fix your car, but, you know, this type, this stuff being in front of you guys is informative to me though.
It better be nice because I'm across the street from it.
Yeah, exactly. So we're all working together to make the place up nice, you know?
Do you live across the street, Mr. Cummings?
I own a, a property across the street, a business.
Where the pizza place is.
Pizza pizzeria and the.
Oh, okay.
Tony Christianos or something?
Yep.
Yeah. So, great. Well, we'll, as soon as you can, just give Ms. Whitman a call and we'll set up a meeting and work for, work to get something that we can kind of formalize more and bring forward with the more formal application. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Nancy, do you want us to move up the Sanoco Dearview Deli sign?
Might as well, right?
Ma'am, are you here for something?
No, it's just a burger.
Oh!
Ah, just like.
I heard your piece also, having to reuse.
Oh! How lovely.
She's taking, she's taking land use in here to observe. So this is, Sanoco, uh, the Dearview Deli, as it's called, over on nine G. If you recall, this was actually given a use variance, not a use variance, but it was granted a variance a long time ago because people testified in that area that there was not, there was a very long distance to travel before you got to their fueling station. And over the years, with the residents that's next door, the plantings have grown up tall. So they want a new sign. Nancy kind of clarified some things for us and the applicant would like to get the sign in as soon as possible since it's getting cold. We just, I put this back on because Nancy clarified a lot of the information that we were looking for. Has everyone had a chance to look at the sign?
Yes.
Yes.
It's dimensionally accurate. Tad made a recommendation for us to grant the sign, put a time permit approval. Do you wanna add anything?
Um, no. It's, it's as it is. It's very similar to the one we did down the street here. The only change being when you have these small panels limited because gas station, you have to have, you have to advertise whatever.
The fuel prices.
Yeah, so we've got three there. We've only got thirty square feet. And so now they're putting the word Sanoco as opposed to the logo. Cause if you know the one down here, the logo's like. But it's the dimensions that you have to work with in this case because of the height. The one down there is just that it had to be ten inches tall and the space is three by three. So.
So this, when you're seeing here is change, yeah, they're keeping the stone base.
We're not using that stone base. It doesn't work with the dimension.
Let me rephrase that, but they're using, they're creating a stone base.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to clarify.
And there'll be no lighting, no downlighting or any lighting?
No, we're going to, if, if, if we feel that it needs something, we would come back to you.
Okay.
But because we have a base and because this is, you know, the digits are lit.
Yeah.
And, and we wanna see for the building, like what comes off if it's, if it's necessary.
There's a lot of ambient light that's, that kind of lights up that whole area.
That's what I mean. Wait and see. And if we need to do something, perhaps at the top across we'll do, you know, hidden, like.
Sure.
Lighting under that'll just flush down the front, but you won't see anything. Just give it a little bit.
Anybody have any other questions?
Yes. The only thing I wanted to know is, it doesn't say Dearview Deli anywhere.
Um, they have approved this, so whether or not they're gonna continue a full deli or whatever, I don't know.
Oh, okay. Did it change hands?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's, that explains a lot. Okay.
We should add that only Ann and I are left up here after fourteen years who remember the result Dearview Deli. And there was a deer draped seductively over the sign.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
And they wanted to keep it, so that's why it became known as Deerview Deli, but the deer disappeared a while back.
When they demolished it, it.
It lost some of its relevance, yep.
Lost it.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Nope.
Who has this resolution? Thank you.
I do. Okay, resolution recommending granting of sign permit, Sunoco Deerfield Deli, Deerview Deli, I don't know if you want that wording even in there, but that's how the resolution has it. 1915 Route G, November 6, 2019, Resolution Number 2019-49. Whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the planning board recommends approval of the sign permit for the replacement freestanding gasoline service station sign for Sunoco, located at 1915 Route 9G.
Second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Nice to see you.
Can I ask a question, because something?
Of course.
Here, listening to the thing with Al's, the entrance, is that just a construction entrance for Baxter, for that development off south, or off Salt Point right next to Al's? Is that going to be just a?
There is, there is no entrance for the Baxter property there.
It's off of East Dorsey.
I think it's gonna be off of Salt Point Solar, maybe.
Yes, and that's, the access should be off of East Dorsey.
Oh, is that where it connects, because if you go down Creek Road and then, and then, you know, hit East Dorsey, and go up East Dorsey, there's, it goes up there, up onto the hill where everything's happening, but just before you get to that hump in the road by Al's on the right, there's all this plastic in a cut in there that's going, and I don't know if you've ever traveled that route often, because you've got the little hill coming up by Joe Chris Jones, and the one on this side coming off, very dangerous pulling out from that side, you'd like, when you're ready to go, you really have to step on it.
They're not supposed to have access off.
No, there's no approved access.
Yeah, there's a cut in there.
They're supposed, all access is supposed to be off of East Dorsey.
They're not using it as an access, but there's a cut in there.
There's a cut in there for them to go in.
The entrance to the.
I thought maybe it was just, you know, for, you know, trucks now coming out Salt Point or something, they're high enough, like those, to see, you know, if something's coming up. I was just curious, because I said, that's an awfully strange entrance for that property.
Looks like a construction entrance.
That's what I thought it might be.
I'll take, I'll go take a look. I mean, to have a construction entrance, they'd have to also have approval from New York State Department of Transportation.
I see the thing, and then the plastic, the high plastic, black going.
Oh, goodness.
You know, I was over there today, but I was removing campaign signs, so I had a narrow focus.
Thank you for that.
And plus, thank her husband, too, we got, he got up at 5:30 each, we were on the road at 5:30, so, to remove them all.
I could tell they were like, gone.
So, at any rate, but I'll go take a look and find out, because there shouldn't be anything.
I travel it all the time, and, you know.
The construction entrance for the solar array, the solar farm is actually off East Dorsey.
It's supposed to be off East Dorsey.
It is off East Dorsey.
No, it's supposed to only be off East Dorsey.
Yeah, I see that, I didn't know what that was going up there, I saw the Baxter sign off, you know, East Dorsey, and he's always got something going on, and I didn't pay much attention until I kind of saw that, and I was like, ooh, this could be bad.
That's a good way to put it, there's always something going on.
True.
So, what's being done there?
She just asked.
Thank you.
Somebody just asked me what's going on there on East Dorsey.
Just asked.
Yeah, we're back, so the next item on the agenda is another sign permit, this is for.
Good thing, Stevie.
Thank you. This is for quote-unquote, Smoke Shop.
That's me.
At Hyde Park Mall, and just a note for all of those who are relatively new, that doesn't mean new, new, when we approved the facades for the Hyde Park Mall, where Stop and Shop, et cetera, is located, to avoid them having to come back each time for site plan amendment, we actually approved sign locations, so, and they all have to pass a certain design unity as required by our code, and so that's why, when Tad makes his recommendations, because they've already kind of figured out what they have to do, so.
Okay, they have all the framework already, okay.
Yep.
Very good. Resolution recommending granting of sign permit, Smoke Shop, 3999 Albany Post Road, November 6, 2019, Resolution Number 2019-42. Whereas, times five, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board relaxes the standard letter height of 10 inches to 16 inches, and be it further resolved that the planning board recommends approval of the sign permit for the Smoke Shop wall sign.
Second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is another sign permit for WG Foot Spa, I'm not sure how you're supposed to pronounce that. This is located colloquially called Bell Tower Plaza, but basically where the laundromat and wash cafeteria is, it's taking up an empty space, and it meets all their design unity requirements there as well. Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Who has this one?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Resolution Recommendation for Issuance of Sign Permit Pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A4D, WG Foot Spa Wall Sign, 4283 Albany Post Road, Resolution Number 2019-48. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board recommends approval of the sign permit for WG Foot Spa.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next, moving through these speedily, next item on the agenda is ZSA Auto Sales, this is.
Isn't that Ja?
Jaja, as in Gabor. Oh, that really dates me.
Me, too.
All of us, all of us.
Okay, a fun fact, there is Ava and Ja, there's Ava and Jaja, who is the third sister?
Oh.
Magda, she was the redhead.
Oh, correct.
See, I passed that Jeopardy game.
And she's the oldest.
This is, this, yes, she was, this is the, this is the former Matthews Auto Sales, which is formerly another auto sales. I believe they're finally moving forward on this, they're constructing.
It broke down again.
Yes, but they're constructing again, and I actually saw some cars there, so.
Yes, they did.
The sign's already up.
Coming soon.
The sign's already up, so they're seeking forgiveness rather than permission. Do you have any questions on this one?
Nope.
This is also not a lit sign, who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution Recommendation for Issuance of Sign Permit Pursuant to Town Code Section Whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator to issue the sign permit for Jaja?
ZSA.
ZSA Auto Sales.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Second to last item, I know, it seems like it needs a Jaja. Second item, second to last item, I should say, is applicant, the applicant is Brian Woolsey, local Realtor and investor, he's seeking a site plan waiver for improvements, located at 22 West Market Street, this is in the scenic area statewide significance, however, it's not visible from either one of the historic sites or the river. Accordingly, a waiver is proposed by Tad, and seems appropriate. Do you have any questions?
Yep.
Nice windows, though.
I know, they are, it looks good.
Very nice.
Who has this file?
I do. Brian Woolsey, 22 West Market Street, Site Plan Waiver, Town Code Section 108-9.4C2, November 6, 2019, Resolution Number 2019-53. Whereas a site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Brian Woolsey for 14 window replacements for a single-family home requiring a building permit, and whereas, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department October 10, 2019, and per the request of the Planning Board dated November 1, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
That would have been a second down there.
Oh.
She was moving it, but that's okay. So, we'll count Diane as second again, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, last item. I thought we already sent this, it feels like I wrote that law.
Why did it say Paul?
Because they got a draft of this local law, but they didn't have the copy, because you didn't authorize me to send it yet.
Oh, my lord.
I thought they were proposing some more revisions.
No, what happened was, is that we revised it more, because I added, we added the next chapter, so as a consequence, I now have to have a motion authorizing me to send this officially to the Town Board.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And by the way, that really was a great catch, everyone's changes at the end, I think will make the law better, and because we sent a draft, Warren looked at it and said, whoa, we're not gonna pass it yet.
Yeah, that was.
So, yeah, and we also had not, they had not exceeded the 30 days we had in which to respond, so, although we weren't gonna sue them. Any other items for the meeting tonight?
No.
Move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Look at that.
To wake up and talk to us, you can.
Fifty-nine, fifty-seven minutes.
Yeah.
You should come and join us all the time.
I'm sorry, I missed.
The exciting portions of it.
What part was that, the pledge?